They're watching upstairs, it's just start recording. All right, hello, my name is Chris McGrail, the Vice Chair of the Pembroke Zoning Board of Appeals, filling in for Chair Cassavan tonight. Please note that this meeting is being made available to the public through an audio recording, which will be used to ensure an accurate record of the proceedings produced in the minutes of all meetings. The comments made in open session will be recorded. PAC TV is providing this service live on Comcast Xfinity Government, access Channel 9. Those without cable, visit YouTube for live streaming. Also, yep, that doesn't apply. When everybody comes up, if we could just please talk into the mic and identify yourself, we gotta make sure we talk in the mic. It's not a big room tonight, but that way, it's not for me, I can hear you, we can all hear each other, it's just for the television and the viewers at home. Either way, so like I said, my name is Chris McGrail, Vice Chair of the Pembroke Zoning Board of Appeals, if the other members want to identify themselves, please?
David Lee.
Ryan McDonald.
All righty. Call the order. We'll go seven o'clock, this is a continuance from August 18th, 2025, case 5-25, special permit, Lisa?
Liza.
Liza, okay, thank you, sorry. Liza Annapoli-Chanette, 537 Senna Street. If you want to come up and tell us a little bit about what you got going on, we'll go from there.
Hello, I am Liza Annapoli, and I'm a former elementary school teacher. I taught in the Marshfield Schools, I taught fourth, fifth, and first grade. My passions in life are helping kids and dogs, so I've decided to merge the two together and train my dogs to be therapy dogs. Therapy dogs are comfort dogs that help people at schools, hospitals, nursing homes, et cetera, during challenging times. I've successfully trained two of my current dogs, Daisy and Honey Bear, these are the two therapy dogs that we have, and I take those two to the Marshfield Schools, specifically Governor Winslow, and we work in the Therapeutic Learning Center and visit classrooms for special needs kids and general age kids that may be having a hard time. Another concern of mine is since there's so many dogs being euthanized in Texas, specifically about 400 per month, I've put my heart and soul into dedicating part of my life into rescuing dogs. I've decided that I'd like to rescue dogs and train them to become therapy dogs if they're not too traumatized. I figured why not turn a crisis into a positive. So what I'm here for is because the state of mass limits households to four dogs unless they require a kennel license. Most surrounding towns have a kennel license in place, but from what I hear, Pembroke is working on one. It should be ready by next year. So what I need is a permit to keep my five dogs. Two are rescues and two are therapy dogs, all well-behaved, trained dogs who are inside by 8:00 PM. When we retire, it's our hope that we start a sanctuary for rescue dogs and continue to train some of the therapy dogs to help the rescue dogs and people in need. So this is just a photo of my current dogs that I have.
Cool. What, you guys have any questions?
Is this like a for-profit thing?
Absolutely not.
Okay. So no money's exchanged for bringing the dogs to the schools?
Nope.
Okay.
It's all voluntary.
Voluntary, okay. The dogs, do they have like a, where do they, is like a space in the yard?
Oh, we have a giant backyard that's fenced in, we are getting it artificially turfed, so they are welcome inside and outside our whole house. We've had, we've been inspected by the, what is it called? The Animal Control, and they passed us as if we were a kennel license, and she said she would be here to support us if needed, and we look great, like we're in good condition, so.
Excellent.
Do you plan to expand on this?
No.
Or are you keeping it a certain level?
No, keeping it certain until, we plan to retire, move to Maine in the future, and that's when we'd like to have more land and make it a little bigger, but right now, we're just, we're at our max, we don't want to go any more than this.
Okay. Then the five?
Five or six, yeah, it might become six.
What number do you want, would you like to call it?
Six.
Six, seven, twelve, seventy-five?
No, 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 we would not go more than seven.
I think it's a fantastic thing you're doing, so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I was gonna personally say, at least, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, to like maybe juice the number a little bit, because, you know what I mean, God forbid, somebody needs an emergency foster or this or that, and then, you know, you know, like I'm not trying to say, why don't, might not make it 15, but like, give yourself a buffer, because if the animal control's already been there, and you have no letters of opposition, to my knowledge, and you guys are on point with what you're doing, not charging for your services, at least give yourself, I like to give myself personally, a little bit of wiggle room, because I'm very human.
Yeah, that's a great idea. I believe we looked at the law, and no more than 10 is allowed for a kennel license, so I would say, I don't foresee us ever going beyond seven or eight, but I agree with you on giving some wiggle room.
How was it left with the, because I'm assuming the Animal Control Officer is gonna be the enforcement agent, and then there'll be a licensing authority set up to issue the kennel license once they have their.
Yes.
Act together. So even if the special permit's granted, subsequently you have to get that approval for the license in addition to the permit, yeah?
Yep.
Cool.
So what do you, I'm just trying to understand what you said. So yeah, we'd give the special, provided we agree with a special permit right now, a year, whenever, January 2026, when allegedly they're gonna have kennel licenses in town, then you'll still have to go for that.
Whoever, yeah, whoever the licensing authority's gonna be to issue the kennel license will issue.
Right, so right now is we're falling under a gray area because there isn't such, and they're doing, they're due diligence covering, they're behind saying, hey, go talk to the zoning board, so that whatever we give them today would be gospel until it became something they could obtain through the town.
Yeah, what, a special permit gives them the ability to run.
Right.
A kennel in the residential District Day.
Yeah.
It doesn't, it's an exception to that requirement that a special permit's required to run a kennel. Whether or not they can, ultimately licensing's gonna be up to someone else, once they get that apparatus in place and issue the licenses, which has all the inspection and all the stuff.
So, I mean, we're just talking here loosely here, but if we were to, you know, grant said special permit until it becomes something that they offer, then they, then, you know, the special permit is valid until, you know, say this day, this time next year.
Yeah, I don't think we need to necessarily, because, because I think if you just say, issue the special permit, you know, subject to licensing, final licensing approval by the licensing authority, you know, enable or establish by the town of Pembroke, because even if there's a special permit authorizing them to operate that in A, the license, if technically, if the license was denied, they wouldn't be able to operate in residential District Day. That's like the first step, is us saying, yeah, it's okay, we'll grant you a special permit to operate a kennel in District Day, but then the licensing authority would then have to grant, under the new law, the license allowing them to operate a kennel in that, in that fashion.
And does this stop here, or does she have to go to select board after us to get approval?
It stops here.
Stops here?
And I will let, I will let the animal control officer know, whatever decision was made today.
Okay.
So is this new licensing provision next year coming in under that new state law?
Correct.
And is there, and there's no upper limit on the new state law, it's just over four, whereas at the moment, we're limited to ten?
A packer collection of more than four dogs.
Okay, so.
So the planning board is in the process of passing, or submitting an article within the town warrant to mirror the state's regulations.
The state's regulations are 10?
No.
Just as a packer collection of more than four dogs, three months old or older.
Okay.
In the state of Massachusetts, it's four dogs, but if you have a personal kennel, so we're considered a personal kennel, not a regular kennel, it's 10.
The town's just trying to catch up.
Yeah.
Right.
And then you're in the commercial setting after that, I think, right?
Yes.
Yeah, which we are not.
Right, yeah, that 10 is that threshold we roll over to commercial, which I don't think is even allowed in San Antonio, Pembroke.
What, commercial?
Well, in residential.
In residential, residential.
In residential, yeah, because they have them over like the medical marijuana, OBLA district, or whatever you want to call it.
Correct.
Industrial, light industry. All right, does anybody else have any questions? Do we have a number we'd like to throw around or feel comfortable with to, you know, say seven, eight, 10?
She's permitted up to 10.
If 10's the limit, okay. Make it 10. That way you don't have to come back for amendment or revise.
I agree, wholeheartedly. All right, so at this time, I would like to put a motion on the floor to approve the, I don't even know the proper way to say this, to approve Ms. Liza Annapoli-Chanette, 537 Senna Street, permission to house, own, all of the above, 10, 10, no more than 10 dogs at her property this, at this time, subject to, help me out, Ryan, what I'm trying to say?
Subject to a personal kennel license approval by the town licensing granting authority to be determined following the passage of a town warrant in the fall by the planning board adopting the Massachusetts Session Law regarding Ollie's law regarding the humane treatment of dogs in kennels.
All those in favor?
Aye.
He's an attorney, I'm a construction worker, so I get, and right now, my brain is just numb, so he had to finish my sentence for me, and thank you for that.
You're welcome, happy to help.
Yeah, big time. So yeah, so you're good, I think there's a, there's a little appeal period, but Sue will work with you to do what, do what needs to be done. Thank you for helping people out, thank you for helping animals, and all the above, and...
That makes very cool.
Yeah.
Thank you so much for your time.
Everybody, everybody needs a little help, the dogs, the people, me, you know?
Thank you so much.
Thank you guys so much.
So far, he's only gonna be done with a therapy dog.
Yeah, honest to God, like, animals is unconditional love, unconditional hate too, sometimes, depends upon the animal.
And depending if it's yours or your neighbor's.
Right. All right, moving on. All right, moving on to public hearing case number 6-25, variance Kristen, Kristen Malm? Cool, 46 Plymouth Street. Come on up. ADU?
Yes. Just say my name?
Yeah.
Okay. Kristen Malm for 46 Plymouth Street, looking for a variance for an ADU on the property lines.
I think, what do you have? You're looking for 15 feet of relief?
Uh, is it 10 or 15? Okay, 10, 10 off the back, everything else.
Oh, it's 15, yeah.
Yeah, well, you're looking for 15 feet of relief, leaving 10 foot, 10 foot left.
Oh, okay, yeah.
It's the same, but different.
15 feet of relief to give me 10 off, okay.
Yeah.
Do we know the side?
My brain maps differently.
Yeah, it's all right, I could think of it five different ways.
Do we know the side setback on this one?
The side, actually, we're keeping in, because we are closer than, I think, is it 20 off the side that's standard? Our garage is already in that variance, so we're keeping in line with that on the side.
No, non-conformity.
Yeah.
Excuse me. Well, if it was a standalone building, does it create any movement?
Say that again?
Well, because it's an ADU, does the variant, would the variance have to request encroachment into, because it's a separate...
Not extending the gallon.
Yeah, you know, it's not, it's not in addition to the existing dwelling, it's a ADU, which stands alone. If it's in the side yard setback, would that acquire a variance application for that? I'm asking about, because I...
No, I know.
We were told no, but I don't, I don't know. I spoke to the building inspector about that, so all that's requested is just, just with the...
The rear, the rear yard?
Yeah, just with...
And that's all that's required?
Correct. Correct.
Okay.
Because it's already nonconforming.
So it fits within that?
Correct.
Because the side yards are already nonconforming, the whole thing is pre-existing nonconforming.
The language with ADUs is very, very, very vague because they're very, very, very new. So it's like every town is, every municipality, every municipality, every state, like there's, you know, 900 square feet is now, then it'll, like, there's other places, I think Situate might even have one, like you can do it greater. I know in California, some places have 800, some municipalities have 1,200 square feet, so because it's in its infancy, it's, it'll continue to evolve, and it'll become more, more clear.
I'm learning a lot about the hers rating.
I had a hers, I had a hers insulation inspection today. Hers checked yesterday.
Oh.
Not the blow a door test, though.
Okay. It's going to be interesting.
Hers rating means it costs you more money.
Yes, yes, which I, does it have to do with how many windows you have too?
There's an equation, there's windows, windows and R-value of the windows, in certain windows you have to get, and then, you know, if you have windows that are of a lesser caliber, you have to have insulation that might be higher because you're, you're not losing as much out the walls as the windows, it's just.
And we can't even add gas. Well, I think because of the hers rating, they want us to do all electric, and I'm like, this, whatever. It's not, it's rules that we, it's out of our control, but I think I could do a gas dryer, but I can't do a gas stove, and I can't do, or maybe I could do a gas water heater, but I can't do a gas dryer and a gas stove. I know, we're finding a lot about it.
So tell me a little bit about like the story, like the existing dwelling and, you know, the ADU. I know, see, see the drawings and, you know, just.
You mean our intention?
Yeah, a little bit more about the need and the why and so forth.
So actually, my mom, who lives in Norwell, which is where I was born and raised, is at 83 years old and can't afford to stay where she is. So when we found out about the ADU and we had done our septic, what, 10 years ago? And thank God, they talked us into doing a five bedroom, that we are now, you know, we don't have to pay extra for the septic, so we're building her an ADU and she will sell her a Norwell home. So I guess that's, I mean, that's our story, you know, with the ADU. No intention of, you know, having renters or anything like that outside of family, but I don't think that matters.
No. In-laws did, ADUs don't.
Yeah.
Yeah, do you have any questions, David?
Yeah, you mentioned 900. Under the accessory apartment regulation in the zoning laws.
Page you reading from, David?
Uh, wait, page 14. Be near the top.
That's the previous bylaw.
Yeah, this is, this is all like brain, brainy new from the state.
So we, we're not inheriting the accessory apartment?
We are, we're, we're just waiting. It was passed at the May's Town Meeting. We're just waiting for it to get approved by the Attorney General, and then I will add it to the by, current bylaws.
Okay, so we're, so we're upping it to 900 now?
It's 900 per the, per the state regulation. It's 900, or if your house, if your house is 1,700 square feet, it can't be more than half of the square footage of your home. So if it's 1,800 or over, you can do 900 square feet. It's, like I said, it's very vague, every, every, it's, it's something.
Yeah, obviously, we're well within that then.
Just from a process standpoint, because you guys know this more than I do, if it's, do we need, from a process standpoint, to the extent we were going to approve, allow the variance, would we need the bylaws to be updated?
No, I've been doing this all year long.
Okay. Right, I know, so I'm not here all the time. Yeah, it's, even though technically it's still in flux, as with the dog license stuff, like we don't need.
No, great question.
We have the authority under the bylaws to.
Yeah, it's one of those, it's kind of like a shame on us thing, you know, like we're just trying to, we got to catch up.
Yeah.
And there, and then anyone who is requesting an ADU, they're going right to the building department to request their permit.
We don't have to deal with in-laws anymore. It all goes straight to the building department?
Because the, as the zoning enforcement officer, they have the, as a matter of right, they can issue a building permit for that.
Correct.
So they'll, they'll get the building permit, provided they get the variance.
Yeah, it'll let, won't clog us up for.
Correct, because basically the state, the state trumps everything.
Right. I, and, and, right, which I knew. I just didn't know if we, from a standpoint, but we don't.
Not yet. Like.
Just as long as the state's approved it, it's not in our bylaws. We have the authority to approve it, even though it's not.
When was it, February did it come about?
Yes, the, the state issued it in February, and then our town meeting was in May.
Yeah, so these are January 24, February, obviously after January. Either way, I'm inclined myself to, to grant the relief needed.
Have we heard from Abutters or anything?
I haven't seen them yet.
Have we heard from Abutters? There'd be no feedback or anything?
No, nothing.
No news is no news.
Yeah.
All right.
They're all playing horseshoes tonight.
Horseshoes?
Yeah.
I love horseshoes.
Tuesday's the night.
Can you find a piece of paper I'm looking for? All right, at this time, I would like to put a motion on the floor to grant the approval of public hearing case number 6-25, variance Kristen Malm, 46 Plymouth Street, is looking for relief, 15 feet of relief in a variance for, for an ADU, which will leave her a 10-foot rear yard setback. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Cool. Get with Sue, she'll do all your stuff. Like there's a small appeals period.
I'll be in touch. Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yep, thank you very much.
Have a good night.
Do we have minutes that we didn't, that we need to do?
Yes, from July 21st.
Thank you guys. Have a good night. Do you need him, Ryan?
What's that?
Do you need him, or you good?
No, I'm good.
Okay.
I saw him.
Put a motion on the floor to approve the meeting minutes of Monday, July 21st, 2025, of the Pembroke Zoning Board of Appeals. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. With that being said, we have no more clerical stuff, right?
Correct.
With that being said, this mem, meeting of the Pembroke Zoning Board of Appeals is now adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you.